We can toss fan and put one with him. Jay Bird.
Lord, precious God, Heavenly Father, we worship for you, Lord. We ask you to give us all our sins, Lord. God, we ask, Lord, that you help us to be mindful, each and every one here, Lord. God, we ask, Lord, that you bless each one of us, Lord, and help us to do the best we can, Lord, for our counting, Father. We ask, Lord, dear Jesus, that you bless each and every one's family that's here, Lord. We ask, Lord, that those who are watching over their safety, Lord, God, give you the praise for all things in their life. In Jesus' name.
Thank you. To the life of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Kyle Rowland.
Marie Ayers.
Here.
Mike Douglas. Scott Fields.
Here.
Brian Gibson. Rusty Orrick.
Here.
Jerry Byrd.
Here.
Warren Kits.
Here.
J.C. Miller.
Here.
Lonny Weldon.
Here.
Eugene Justice.
Here.
Beverly Hall.
Here.
Greg Leach.
Here.
Charles Baird.
Here.
Michael Coddell.
Here.
Well, President, two actions.
Chair Michael Ruckler approving agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as set forth. Anybody have a second? Mr. Weldon, any discussion? I'll see any Kyle Rowland.
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Rusty Orrick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kits.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lonny Weldon.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Leach.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Appreciate it. We have two different copies, two different nights, October 6th through October 13th. Is that fine? We have a motion to approve the minutes of October 6th and October 13th. Any second.
I'll say.
Second Miss Hopp, any discussion, any changes? I'll see any Kyle Rowland.
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Rusty Orrick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kits.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lonny Weldon.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Leach.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Coddell.
Yes.
Motion passed.
First item on the agenda tonight, excuse me, I've had a head couple last week, Minor Lock Subdivision, Beverly Hall, Gildeale Road. Does anybody?
I was invited to sit with George.
I can't believe he's sitting there.
This is a real simple, we serve three.
You got any copies?
No, I.
You just got this one?
Yeah, yeah. And what it is, oh, Scott Field, he's been coaching over the Navy's property line.
Yes, sir.
And he's willing to sell when I do that, at the time, I just don't know, three hundred for the Navy's.
What's your recommendation, Lord?
Looks good, real simple flat here, like I said, just one property, you have property and minerals, no selling, whatever. Don't see anything, don't see any issues with that recommendation.
We have a recommendation, motion of Mr. Weldon, second of Mr. Fields. Any discussion, questions? I'll see any Kyle Rowland.
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Rusty Orrick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kits.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lonny Weldon.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Leach.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Coddell.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Sorry, just, uh, take care of that one. Second item on the agenda is Minor Lock Combination, Faith Fuel Innovations LLC Church Street. Can we have? Yes, sir. You got copies, sir?
Yes.
Melissa Phillips and her husband own Faith Fuel Innovations, and they bought a little lot there at the intersection of Church Street and Commerce Street inside the city of Delco. The house that sits on the lot is barely big enough to fit inside of the Downey lines, and they've asked their neighbor to sell them a little slice there that I've shown to be able to put a driveway in there when they remodeled the house, and he's agreed.
Well, is this, is this property in the city of Delco or in town?
In the city of Delco.
The entire, if he's being added to?
Yes.
Oh, well, well, this needs to go for the city of Delco.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize this was in the city of Delco.
Okay.
I should have caught that. All right. We'll, uh, we'll have to take it. I'll let you know, but it'd be my ass away until first Tuesday. We don't have, this isn't an arduous thing, so we should. There's no action to be taken. Number two, there's no action to be taken. Number three, is Minor Lock Subdivision, Brian Feadley, Oak Bethlehem Road, that he had two seconds. He was standing there. He was supposed to stand there. No, it's not the other. Pass one over to Bill, sir. Need one over there on? Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Feadley's sister owns a farm off of Bethlehem Road. She's willing to divest down a one acre tract that he's going to put a double wide home on. He's really kind of a silent partner in the thing because the property is actually owned by him and his sister both. His comment to me was he got in control with the IRS a few years ago, so the dad, when he divested it to him, instead of divesting it to him and his sister both, he distributed it to his sister to protect the property. But she's willing to put this acre into his name, insert, serve it with the JPE that we've got shown there on him, and he's agreed to maintain the JPEs.
So this is a, as long as the owner signs it, that's all we have, so she, she just has to sign off on it. But in terms of the joint permit easement, this is a, this will be a new easement for the driveway there right now, you know, so he's just going to extend, extend that existing path. And I've shared with Mr. Camperon, how did you say your last name?
Camperon.
Camperon, I've shared with Mr. Camperon what his client has to do with easement. It's got to be ten feet wide, four inches deep of mixed gravel.
Yes, sir.
Thirty foot driveway, he's got a thirty foot driveway on there, so this will be a preliminary approval of the flat, and then for the final approval, they would need to, you would need to actually build easement, then of course get, looks like they got a septic permit approved. Christie should be able to sign the flat. If you got a septic permit, she should be able to sign off on it. So the ideal is she can sign this flat. He's got maintenance language there for responsible maintaining the easement. So, he's got what he needs on there as far as I'm concerned in our regulations. Just, again, this is a preliminary flat, he'll have to actually build the easement before we approve the plan.
You recommend approval?
I, I recommend approval of the preliminary flat.
All the utilities and stuff, someplace.
He's, he's doing septic and.
Water unavailable?
Yes.
I have a motion for a preliminary approval for the flat, I need a second. Second Miss Iris, any discussion? I'll see any Kyle Rowland.
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Rusty Orrick.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kits.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lonny Weldon.
Yes.
Eugene Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Leach.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Coddell.
Yes.
That's it. Motion passed.
Number four on the agenda for tonight is Minor Lock Combination, Ron DeFerson's Big Time Point. Do we have anybody here? Can you give this to?
Yeah, I think it's sort of given that way.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Number four on the list is the King of Rose, King of Rose. Number eleven on the list is King of Rose. Number eleven on the list. 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 Number eleven on the list.[706.97]
Second to Mr. Kidd, any discussion? How will it be?
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Russ Yor.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kitz.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lon Welton.
Yes.
Jean Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Cottell.
Yes.
Seven has been approved. Number eight on the list is a minor loss subdivision, Mark Prophet, Old Jackson Square.
He gets down Prophet.
No, Prophet is number eight, number eight.
I'm going to take you to the other one. Or some plan.
We approve seven.
I was trying to keep up.
Yeah, it has two, three. That's it. What's a break up?
Just two lots just cut off. Cut off that back side.
Flag laws.
We have to keep the trailers still.
Looks, looks good to me. Right way to prove. Have a recommendation, everything's in order.
Make a note.
Motion of Mr. Miller, second of Miss Ayers, any discussion? How will it be?
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Russ Yor.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kitz.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lon Welton.
Yes.
Jean Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Cottell.
Yes.
Motion approved. Number eight on the list is approved. Number nine is a minor loss subdivision, Lakeside Estate, full road.
In lots of, look for.
They're building a line right now. Pardon me?
They haven't got the sewer, sewer down there yet, see others.
But they've got problem system somewhere. I know they had trouble with the water. Who's running this?
I don't know. He, uh, yeah, sign his name.
Can you find out? If you don't mind. Is a company out of Alabama. Your recommendation?
I think so.
Number two. We have a motion of Mr. Mark, of Mr. Miller, need a second to approve. Miss Ayers, second to motion, any discussion? About Lakeside Estate full road plan. How will it be?
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Russ Yor.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kitz.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lon Welton.
Yes.
Jean Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Cottell.
Yes.
Number nine has been approved, the planning commission. Number ten on the agenda is a minor loss subdivision, William Woods, McKinley Road. Simple two lots of a missing, right? So mad. Four lots, okay. Full lot's only two acres. So yeah, so if you can get a whole Christmas message to sign. Yeah, so. So it'd be too hard. You don't care if we give them. I need a motion to approve, your recommendation is to approve. Motion of Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Need a second to approve.
I'll say.
Second to Miss. I'm sorry, I talked to. Oh, so. Well, hold up just a second. We have a motion to second to approve. Number ten on the list, McKinley Road. Any discussion? How will it be?
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Russ Yor.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kitz.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lon Welton.
Yes.
Jean Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Cottell.
Yes.
Approved. Number, uh, number ten on the list, McKinley Road has been approved by the commission. Number eleven is a minor loss subdivision, William, William Hadley, Old Long, uh, Long, excuse me, Old Long Hollow Road East. It's Old Long. Excuse us, part of it. Yes, John, call Bill Beck, he said, yes, they maintain, it's gravel road, but he maintained. It's, it's part of Old Long Hollow. The water leads up together. I looked at today, it looks good, I'm sorry, it's not an even, it's kind of. Your recommendations, are they approved?
Make a note.
Has a motion on the floor of Mr. Miller, need a second to approve. Second of Miss Fields. We have a motion and second for a minor loss subdivision, Old Long Hollow Road East. Any discussion? How will it be?
Marie Ayers.
Yes.
Scott Fields.
Yes.
Russ Yor.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kitz.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lon Welton.
Yes.
Jean Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Cottell.
Yes.
Approved. Number one, I'm sorry.
They had clear water solutions, just like.
Are they in Alabama? I think a lot of decks took over a lot of the flood. Number eleven has been approved. Number twelve is, uh, PU D site plan, Foxwood, uh, Foxwood Drive, Robert Campbell, I guess is represented by Robert Campbell, so. Jake?
Yes.
I think it's the big package, the package.
Yeah, we've got a full, uh, give us a plan set.
What's going on?
So, this is a. Got a ten. Ten residences, um, on a cul-de-sac that comes off of, uh, existing Foxwood Drive. Is this a clean house? Yeah. Yes. Maybe utilizing existing sewer on site. And selling water main. If you look at existing conditions, so page, let's look at page one. The number is at the bottom, right corner. The existing site has, has five residents on site, um, with an access drive, that has access to Foxwood Drive. Looking at the south of the plane view. The existing sewer north of those. North of those, um, residences that follows existing gravel drive. Where these sorts of. If these sorts of these part property, uh, series of this, uh, side. All the things. North of us is high water drive, which runs on Norris Lake. And. If you go to the site point on page two. You can see we have ten, ten residences, uh, the site has cul-de-sac, uh, being to Campbell County, uh, regulations. And same thing, if, you know, if we look at grid plan on page three. The road, the road slopes towards the cul-de-sac. All the drains from our, our site, um, including all residences, um, approved through ten and, and the road, or close to the road, Woodmark Lane. Which is the name of the proposed road, will be, all that drainage will be can conveyed to a stormwater detention potter. And, uh, will be released at a lesser rate than, uh, existing conditions. And. That's, uh, that's about it.
This road already exists, it's already been built?
No, it's not been built. There's, there's an existing, there's an existing gravel.
There's a meter off the road line. Meter off the upper road, off the section already being aligned.
Yes.
There's a path there, yeah, our sewer already there. What we do about PU Ds in Camp County, this is going to be commonly owned property, where they're going to build, they're proposing to build ten homes here. The civil plans, Bill Beck looking at the road plan, is okay with it, the way they build the road, uh, stormwater, adapt the drainage calculations here. Uh, they've got sufficient stormwater, uh, infrastructure here per our regulation. The only question is, or the only issue is, they only have, they're asking for variance on the right of way and the roadway. So, if you look at page two. Their right of way width is forty foot, and we require fifty foot. And then the actual width of the pavement on the road is eighteen foot, and we require twenty foot. So, they can. They can address why they're asking for that variance, but just so you all are aware, this, this would be variance from us to, to pursue for those two things. Uh, Mr. Logan, you want to address quiet?
Well, I'll go ahead and address the forty foot right away first. You understand forty foot right away is allowed in Camp, in Camp County for, with the variance, per the right notions?
It could, but yeah, so you can ask, you can ask for variance on, on really anything.
Yeah.
But you have to show, if, if the language, I'll just read you all the language because we had it from last time. Where the developer can show that straightened areas to these regulations would cause unnecessary hardship. Unnecessary hardships shall not include financial hardship or additional costs. And where the planning commission decides that there are topographical or other conditions peculiar to the site, and a departure from these regulations will not destroy their intent. Any variance thus offered shall be stated in writing in minutes of the planning commission with the reasoning on which the departure is justified and set forth. But those are your standards for variance right there.
So the reason for it is, if you were to look at the existing, um, conditions on page one. So the slopes on the site, on either side of the, of that distant path are, are very steep. So I'd say anything over a two-one slope, two-one steep, or anything over two-one steep.
But.
But it makes it, makes it difficult to, to build up. And so the reason why we're requesting variance for the right of way is to, is to minimize how far the, the, uh, buildings are set back from, from the roadway. Any further back, it makes it a little bit more difficult to, to build, so, and it increases the cost of destruction, not a reason.
Just telling the truth, yeah?
Yes.
Our planning commission rules says fifty foot must be on the property. So we like to give a variance and it be left up, your recommendation on the rest of it, I guess, is. Good. Good, except for letting them make the variance, and that'll be the planning commissions. Whether they make a motion to approve or, or disapprove. I would say a word that. Reason for variances, you don't want to render somebody's property unusable, and so. The question I would add for you is. Is there no way you can get the fifty feet of property and still use, still build the property? That's true. That's an important question.
I guess the question, question I would have is, um, yes, we have the ability to. You know, is there an opportunity here to get potential approval upon increasing the right of way?
It's up to the planning commission on that one. Uh, so your request is that it can go for fifty foot?
Yes.
Contingents once we get put in?
Yes.
I would, and I would ask you to, to make the change and we bring it back instead of approving the contingent, if you, if at least. Give the best effort to make fifty foot right of way, um. And then see where that takes you. Because again, variance is here, so that, so people have to use their property, that's, if the zoning, if, if we don't have zoning, if the subdivision regulations render their property unusable, that's where the variance comes in, it's a hardship. I don't know that they've demonstrated it's unusable to this point, um, it's a difficult property, you don't have.
Well, we'll say the, you know, we, we did have a few technical board, created by you guys. The slopes that we're showing, the slopes that we're showing are like one point five on one slope, so that's, that's steep.
Pretty steep, yeah. I saw.
So.
Question is, do you have enough to approve? Is it an issue of patent buy property from the neighboring property with five homes on it or something like that?
And the size of the.
So the size of the homes you go, if we go for the. You have, you could get the cut of that slope, that slope's getting, slope gets deeper, and then, and then you run.
Yeah, the, it's, it's on this for sure, it's on, but they've, they've got all their engineering.
I'm saying it's really steep, so.
How often does it bother?
It's lower.
So you've got back pistons.
If you don't look at that one, there's a sort of side layout, right here, you assume that somewhat of a right way looking path, then. That's the high water.
Yeah, it's been a while, but I've been on the high water. It's like a golf cart path. Certainly the site has topographical issues, and that's where our variance language calls out, so. It's just opening the door to a variance like this could, could put us in, in not a great position in the future, so, and. It's, it's the letter of the law, the intent of it, uh, that's why I say. If there is a way that you can give the fifty, make our job a lot easier.
Also maybe having one less and turn the units a different direction. You recommend the title?
When they're asking for a variance, we need to vote it out for both things, if that's what you want to do. I think you should vote it off and vote it down. It's up to you all. I would say.
What, what are you going to start to say, what are you, are you acting on it or what?
I think we could act on it either way, but, uh, I don't know that it meets the qualifications that we've had at our subdivision regulations. Or, or they could retract, they can come back and whatever. Hold on, Mr. Miller. You can tell you what I mean, you're saying you're going to come back, hopefully come back with, with signs and road. Hopefully. Uh, no, did I misunderstand?
Good, oh, well, my, excuse me, sir, I need to answer a little bit, but, yes, we.
Go back to the drawing board and see.
Yes.
Give them another look, see if you can, and then, and then we'll talk to you again. I mean, the planning commission is going to have, and I've said here, I said, like, you're not going to have a variance on this. But it's like I told you last week, it's left up to the planning commission, that's why I said. If that's the case, Mr. Miller's got a motion on the floor to table, for, for, to bring back to us, and I think a second on that end after vote. Have a second for Mr. Fields, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Got a valid right here.
We don't oversee that, and I'm just curious, is this why? Mr. Miller, you've made a motion, you can't leave unless you can retract your motion. Wait, wait till the vote. Wait till the votes goes, if, if you don't mind, you make the motion, so whatever. Unless you want to retract it, somebody else make the motion. Gary? Have you ever, you've been on the commission all time. Do you remember, have a major variance or anything? I'm sure at some point, probably. I remember, can, that being asked, yeah, this doesn't happen very often. It's happened a lot, well. If, if we have, you know, we have to vote if we do it, so. Any more questions? We have a, we have a motion on the floor and a second to table, so they'll bring it back to us. Any discussion, any more questions? How will it be?
Marie Ayers. Scott Fields.
Yes.
Russ Yor.
Yes.
Jerry Byrd.
Yes.
Warren Kitz.
Yes.
J.C. Miller.
Yes.
Lon Welton.
Yes.
Jean Justice.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Greg Lee.
Yes.
Charles Baird.
Yes.
Michael Cottell.
Yes.
I haven't been to table till, till the right back to this. Be a touch more. I think we covered the agenda, if we got anybody in the audience that wants to speak to the planning commission, it's your time. You'll have three minutes to speak, you'll state your name and what you live at. That might be any way, you might want to come on up to all the seats.
Can you stand here and come closer?
If fine, that's a duty. For the mind.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Uh, my name is Ron Cur, I'm a resident now in Dimory, and I come here tonight to speak not only to myself, but other residents of Dimory. About the six hundred unit proposed development that is in the Shanghai Road. And one of the things that, uh, a lot of questions that people have are, number one, the road safety of Shanghai Road in itself. At the best of times, that road is hard to pass with two cars, in the summertime, it gets even more congested with tourists and boat traffic and delivery trucks and other things, and including tractors, which, uh, full disclosure, that would be me as well on the tractor. And so, you know, we have some concerns about what we would do with that road, or what would be done with that road. Uh, one of the questions is, if it's going to be widened, whose property will be taken? How much property will be taken? What structures would possibly be impacted, uh, natural structures such as ponds, trees, what would happen there? And, uh, you know, would these things be removed, and how long would these constructions take place, and what would be the impact on the residents there at that time? Also, it's been said that Sugar Hollow Road might be used, and the same concerns go for Sugar Hollow as well. Additionally, Shanghai Road is, intersects with Dimory Road and the Dimory Mart, I'm sure all of you are familiar with. Uh, the Dimory Mart shares part of Shanghai Road as its parking lot, and it's already a dangerous intersection at best. So, what would this increase traffic, what would be the impact on that intersection there as well? And the next thing I would like to talk about is the utilities, so to supply the power and water to this new community, uh, would require extensive excavation to run those in. And it would disrupt both property and roadways, and what would be the impact on the residents then? Uh, so the updated power lines would be needed, uh, and during this construction, how long would the existing residents possibly be without reliable power or water services? And then the sewage management in the community itself, not Dimory community, I'm sorry, the, the new development. Going to have to have septic tanks and drain lines, and what's the impact on the lake itself and ecosystems there? And then there's also historical considerations, there's a cemetery that's on that property. Uh, so, and there's also unmarked graves, when TBA flooded the area, some were moved to Baker's Forge, others were left behind. So, what considerations and safeguards are going to make sure that they're handled with dignity? And if they have to be moved, where are they going to go? And who's going to be over that? The second thing is, is that, well, not the second, the next thing is, is that these houses that are going to be built here, who are they being built for? Uh, the developer wants to call it Elkstone at Lake Norris. Lots of residents here, we know it is Norris Lake. And so, what do you want to know, who's, who are they marketing this for? Who's that pitch for when you say Lake Norris? It's definitely not for us Campbell Countyans in a lot of ways, I believe, that's personal, what I'm like. The last thing I want to talk about is, when the developer was contacted by the press, the developer said that when they build these places, that the community welcomes them in and loves to have them there, and so encouraging. I don't believe the developer spoke with anyone in the Dimory community. And I don't believe that developers spoke with too many people in Campbell County, as we saw in the survey that was done by the press. One of the things that he said that concerns me, and this is a personal thing, I'm speaking for myself, no, I'm not speaking for the rest of the folks out there. He said, and I quote, "When Karla gets this far into a development, we don't back down." Well, to me, that was a bit of a passive aggressive statement, it was a little bit of an intimidating statement. And when I look around this room tonight, and I see all the Campbell Countyans here and behind me, I know that none of us in here are easily intimidated. Not like Scott Fields, I know he's not easily intimidated, or Greg, or Baird. And so that was just a little bit concerning to me, uh, because I don't think he's taking into account just what we have in this community, and what, uh, we feel in this community when we have outside interest coming in, which, bringing us tax money, I know. And it's good for us in a lot of ways, but in a lot of ways, when they come in, they, they just kind of take us for granted. And they take our culture and our tradition and our natural resources for granted. And I trust and have faith in this planning commission that you folks will do your due diligence when you're looking at this new development. And I have faith in you all that when you do go forward with this, that you will think that, is this growth sustainable? Is this growth responsible? Is this in the best interest of any and all that call this place home? And I do have faith that, that you will do that, I do. But I just want to thank you for letting me come here and speak tonight. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can I ask this question?
Sure.
You have a.
I do. I live on.
Like when you're, it's like they start to build, you've got concrete trucks and all that coming in.
Yes.
That's going to put you into the tie trying to get on, be on the road.
Yes, sir, it is, I mean, in the summertime, when we have delivery trucks, and there's eighteen wheelers that go down Shanghai Marina, and this is not anything sand negative towards Shanghai Marina, they've been great neighbors to it. But you'll have delivery trucks, tractor trailers, increased traffic. Shanghai Road is dangerous to begin with, there's many blind curves. Uh, I pull out on the road, there's a sharp curve at my driveway, I can't tell you how many times I'll look, okay, there's nobody, nobody coming. I'll pull out and be from myself to Scott, and there's a car up on. Yeah, and so it's the first curve that goes down around.
Sometimes you take a boat.
We actually do.
Get over the sound road and up in.
And so Dimory Road itself, like they're paving Dimory Road right now, and, you know, today I had to stop for the papers, and I looked up and heard every minute, and it took no time for twenty cars, and I counted, it took no time for twenty cars to pile up behind me, so that's just in the off season. You know, during season, it's extremely crowded there. And, and Shanghai Road, there literally would be tourists, I would be working on the farm or something, and there would be tourists running up the road, and they're exercising, they're running up the road to, to the Dimory Mart, and I would tell them, this is not a safe road for you to run on, or they would be biking. And so this increased traffic that come with this six hundred unit, and I don't believe they're going to sell six hundred units, I don't think there's going to be possibly six hundred units there, but there'll be an increased traffic flow, no doubt. And then when you talk about the visitors that will come.